On our agenda this evening, we will have the pledge allegiance and introduction of board members. We'll start with those two things, so if you'll please stand and proceed.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the board tonight, we have Sean Winston, Niall Shore, I'm Paul Bovier, and Mike LaRue. And we do have a quorum, so we will proceed. Approval of minutes for August 2nd. There as everyone read the minutes. If you have any comments, speak up.
No, I'm good.
I see no problems with them either, so with that in mind, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I move to approve the minutes as written.
Second, all those in favor? That's a four to zero, so they are approved as written. Next item is the public hearing on land use amendments. I believe that was postponed from the last meeting until tonight. And probably the proper way to do that would be to quickly go through as they're written up. And I will start the public hearing in one moment, but I think... The public comment period, I skipped over it, and I'm sorry I did. Is that something that you folks are here for? Or do you want to be part of the public hearing for the land use amendments?
I guess part of the public hearing for the land use amendment would be appropriate.
Well, open up the public hearing for the land use amendments that we'll be voting on in November later on this year. I don't think I want to read through every line in here, but maybe just go through and try to summarize it by topic. If that makes sense.
These were put online, so they were available to the public?
Yep.
First item that we will be voting on is an amendment in the Village Overlake District, which is the prime tanning piece, and it only pertains to the main prime tanning piece of 7.7 acres across the street. We put back in a four to one ratio to try to get more commercial into the area. That had been pulled for the discussion that we had, and then after thinking about it again, we decided we would put that back in. And pretty much what that says is residential uses on a first floor of a building are allowed in structures in existence prior to 2015. But if the footprint is expanded, it shall not be allowed in the building if it's expanded by 10% or more. And we want to maintain a ratio of four to one between the residential and the non-residential. The second item that we're dealing with is really trying to get a handle on the medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, and there are many changes here. Probably the biggest ones is we've added recreational marijuana retail definition and also a medical marijuana dispensary expansion. And we've changed the use table, which, and I'm sure a few folks have looked at this, but in R1 and R2, both medical marijuana cooperative and a production facility are not allowed, but they are a conditional use in R3 as well as rural, commercial, industrial. They're not allowed in any other district. And what that means is in R3 and rural, commercial, industrial, you will still have to get a conditional use permit to put these uses in. In the other districts, that will not be allowed. Conditional uses for those that are not familiar with them, it just means you have to go through certain performance standards, so you are a good neighbor to your neighbors. We also added some performance standards, again, for the marijuana topic. And... There are some specifics there, and I think I'll just read them because they're a little confusing. The performance standards for the marijuana topic is signage and advertising. The signage and advertising for any facility responsible for the cultivation, manufacturing, sale, or distribution of marijuana shall comply with all applicable provisions of land use ordinance. The cultivation, if marijuana is... If marijuana and/or products containing marijuana are sold on the same site, the cultivation area shall be no greater than 50% of the total floor area of the building. And the third is consumption, and this, I guess, is pursuant to a Maine state law, LR 2395, section 1501, where marijuana in the town of Berwick may only be consumed in a private residence or on private property. Such private property must not generally be accessible to the public, and consumption of marijuana or marijuana products must be explicitly permitted by the property owner. All other consumption limitations in Maine LR 2395, section 1501 subsection 2, shall apply to the town of Berwick. And I think what we're saying here is that... That I think the state of Maine is not going to allow what we consider a public place for marijuana consumption, and we're just following that. The fourth item is the visibility of activities. All activities of dispensaries, cultivation facilities, processing facilities, and marijuana establishment shall be conducted indoors. And I think that covers the additions or changes to marijuana.
Paul, you might want to read the top one on that page, the limitations in R3.
Ah, thank you, Niles. Medical marijuana cooperatives and medical marijuana production facilities are allowed in the R3 zone only on properties which have frontage on Route 9 or Route 4. That is... This is only applicable to R3 because if you look back at the table, it is allowed in the RCI as well. And that does not have the restriction of those two roads in the rural, commercial... So it gets a little confusing there. But in R3 zone, it's only on Route 4 or Route 9. And there are some places on Route 236 which are RCI that I think it would also be allowed there. It's a very limited area, pretty much where the transit station is and the concrete plant, you know, that kind of stuff. The next amendment is... It discusses multiple manufactured homes, mobile homes on individual lots. And we've recently had an issue where three mobile, multiple manufactured homes were put what seemed to be on one lot, where in actuality it was actually on two lots. And this kind of clears up that issue a little bit. In R1, you need a conditional use to put a manufactured home on an individual lot. In R2 and R3, it's permitted. In commercial, industrial, it is not permitted at all. Conditional uses are allowing that. In rural, commercial, industrial, it's permitted in aquifer protection and not permitted in the shoreland resource protection or another SP resource protection zone. So that only applies to manufactured homes or mobile homes. Fourth amendment that we're covering is we've had a lot of issues with farm animals. What are they, and how many can you have? There's been some issues with having many farm animals on a small lot in the R1 zone, for example. So we're adding definitions that... And performance standards that will try to control that so that you don't... If you have a very small lot, you're not going to have, you know, several pigs or that kind of thing. We have an animal farm definition. It's defined as a parcel of land that contains at least the following land area used for keeping of horses, mules, cows, goats, sheep, hogs, similar sized animal for the domestic use of the residents of the lot, provided the adequate land areas provided for each animal excluding any bodies of water of one quarter of an acre or more. And that applies to cattle, which is like a cow, for example. You need one cow per acre of land, no more than that. A horse is one and a half horses per acre of land. Sheep, three animals per acre. And pigs, two animals per acre. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, B.J., this came from like state?
Yes, State Farm Agriculture Conservation and Forestry has a standard similar to that. And City of Auburn is also a model community that uses that type of a standard.
And that seems to work out, you know, with that many animals per acre. Another amendment is there had been some exceptions to putting very large buildings on a parcel of land, and one of the exceptions, I believe, was the growing of marijuana. No matter how large the building was, it was excluded. Pardon?
Agriculture.
It was because it was defined as agriculture. Now, any uses of... Any large building for any use, regardless of use, will have to have a conditional use hearing where the neighbors can actually chime in with that use going in next to them.
That's non-residential use.
That's not residential. And these are any non-residential buildings greater than 5,000 square feet. That's an addition that we're putting in the table. The next amendment we're putting in is an odor control to try to get a handle on the same topic again of having many farm animals on one parcel. And that's a pretty tough one because odor is very subjective. And so what we are proposing to add is in 7.7 is odor. No use may, as a result of normal operation, regularly emit odors that are offensive or harmful by reason of their character, intensity, or duration, and that they are perceptible beyond the lot line. No odor may be considered offensive if it is commonly associated by way of character, intensity, or duration with a permitted use in the zoning district in which it is located. Odors commonly associated with a permitted use may not be perceptible beyond the zoning district boundary unless the use is permitted in an adjacent zoning district. So we're just trying to get a handle on... It's not like sound that you can actually measure, but if the odor is not something you typically would find in that district, it will not be allowed, or you can measure it beyond the property line, or you can, you know, smell it. And that was the last one. Are there questions on this or something you would like to add? Because I know you're here. Would you like to come to the podium to...
Say your name.
The public hearing is open, so state your name and...
My name is Aaron Barth. We own property on Wentworth Road. I think our number is going to be 31 Wentworth. We haven't built yet, but we're in the process of starting. And we're currently... I am a medical cannabis caregiver that currently operates in North Berwick on Buffam Road. And we are interested in negotiating a lease to lease out a commercial space to put in our licensed kitchen. We currently have a licensed operating kitchen, but we want to expand the size of it just for ease of operation as well as an extraction lab. It would not be a C1D1 extraction lab. It's ethanol. We don't do butane. So it falls under, you know, the safe parameters that we're looking to do. The building located is 513 Portland Street, which is in the RCI district, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is applicable or allows the processing and kitchen use for what we do. But in addition to that building that we're looking to lease, we also want to be able to have the ability to have our medical cannabis storefront available at that location. The reason that we're looking at this specific location is really for safe patient access. It's prime location for easy off, easy on to Route 4. Lot of handicap parking. We do have a lot of handicap patients that we do see. All of our patients are typically 50 and up, all the way currently to, I think, what? 90 or something like that now. So we're not dealing with the recreational market, and, you know, we're not going that direction personally. So the other... I do understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but the RCI does not allow currently the storefronts for medicinal caregiver storefronts? Is that what I heard properly, that RCI does not?
I don't think that's right.
Yeah, so we don't have anything that says medical storefront. We would fall under a dispensary. If you guys chose to, we could modify and add storefront to the language. It probably makes sense to have it be medical marijuana dispensary slash medical, whatever the terminology is.
I know.
A storefront... So we have one already that we've issued a conditional use on Portland Street.
Yeah, that's a growing facility.
But they are having patients coming in to pick up.
To pick up, alright.
So that's not a storefront.
Right.
There's a difference. What is the difference?
If you're proposing to change, it would include a storefront. Because it says sells. Isn't that what a storefront would do?
Yeah, so...
Yeah, okay, but yeah, then he's saying that it's not allowed in the district that he wants to...
I understand that, but I don't think we need to do anything with the definition. It's just a table that we need to talk about.
Yeah, I would just say that for the dispensary, for clarity, because dispensary to these guys and anyone else that looks at it that's not from Berwick will think of the dispensaries that are licensed as a dispensary.
There's also different licensing, because if they're licensed as caregivers, then it's not a dispensary. It's their caregivers. But if it's a collective of caregivers, then it's under a different... That's when it's with the conditional...
For our purposes, we don't really need to get into that minutia.
Right.
Well, would that make it a cooperative? Because we do have a definition, we do allow that.
The one that we just issued, the conditional use is cooperative.
It'd just be conditional use.
So was he talking about a cooperative or a dispensary?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I'm a single sole... Yeah. So what we're looking at is we just want another location for our patients to come to that's a little more accessible and easier to get in and out of.
The Buffam Road facility you have, you mean? This is in addition to?
This is in addition to the Buffam. We only want our Buffam Road facility to be a grow only. We're not intending on relocating that. We don't want to grow in Berwick. We only want to be able to process our... I specialize in capsule formulations, so we're not, you know, doing a lot of the other things that other people are doing.
On Wentworth Road, what do you do there?
On Wentworth Road, I'm going to be living on Wentworth Road. That's a completely different... It's walking distance to...
The 513, that's an existing building?
513 is an existing building. It's right next to Santa Falls Nursery there.
It's the...
Right next to that power station.
I think there were seven office uses in that building.
And so currently, I think there are additional...
It's a good location.
Yeah, there's some retail, or I'm sorry, residential allowances in that building. And we would actually be taking away some of those residential uses because we'd be occupying half of the building.
So what you would be doing there then is processing the material that's grown in North Berwick. Create it there. After you process it, then you would have...
We would transport it to there.
People would come in and...
So we would have three different units, is that right? Or do we take four? Four. So we'd be taking four units, two in the basement, which would be a kitchen and a processing lab. And then on the first floor would be offices and conference room. And then adjacent to that, that is separate with a locked door, is a... Would be where we would meet our patients and dispense the medicine at that juncture. And whether it be by appointment... Right now, we're by appointment only regardless. Coming up in October with LD 1539, it just changes things a little bit more. And we wouldn't necessarily have to be by appointment only. So we're not looking to open up a recreational dispensary or storefront. It's just to continue on with what we're doing and being able to help more people in a more conducive environment.
So if... Whatever needs to be done to the table to allow the dispensing and the way that you're talking about it right now, if that were changed, then you'd still have to come in and get a conditional use permit, which should not be a big issue if you meet the performance standards.
Yeah, I mean, we just want to make sure. I want to be able to be fair to these guys because they're the building owners. If I sign a lease with them, you know, we're tying up half of their building. And, you know, if we're unable to have that retail storefront, that's going to, you know, really...
In your performance on yours.
You know, cause a problem with these guys because they're ready to go. You know, and understanding that we're going to be taking on a lease without occupying that retail storefront until October 9th, I think. It's either 9th or 6th. I forget which date it is. But I think it's... Let's just say it's the 9th for...
I think it's the 9th.
For argument's sake.
So I think the only confusing part, at least to me, is when you say retail, it's still patient based.
It's 100% medicinal patient based.
I think that is going to be confusing more than just me.
We've been equating the word retail with recreation.
I know that. I know.
So James and I were just talking back, and probably the way to address that piece for you would be under amendment three where it says medical marijuana dispensary, change that to dispensary slash storefront, because within that...
We'd have to add a definition for...
That would be the definition.
That would be the definition because within that definition there, it says sells supplies or dispenses of marijuana, paraphernalia related supplies, and educational materials to qualifying patients. So that would give them a little more flexibility. And then we'd have to add that as a conditional use in the RCI zone under the dispensary label.
And also, if you look at, I believe, it should be in there where we're redefining retail marijuana as recreational marijuana. I'm pretty sure that's an amendment too.
Yeah.
So you want to stop, yeah, you want to stop using it.
Yeah.
Sure.
We have to stop using the words in certain ways here.
Correct. You want to make sure there's a difference between medical retail, if you will, and recreational retail.
Yeah, we're not recreational retail. Don't even want to go there.
So on Portland Street, you're not going to cultivate. You're just going... Tell me what you're doing again on Portland Street.
No, we would not be cultivating. We would be transporting our product from Buffam Road in North Berwick, the couple miles down to that facility to process it. the couple miles down to that facility to, uh, process it into concentrate, which then gets processed into, uh, dispensable medicine.
Translate the word process into English so you can understand.
Sure, we go from raw flower, uh, bud, and we'll extract the oils out of it with ethanol extraction, then evaporate that off by collecting, it's all closed, uh, systems. And then, um, we, uh, constant, uh, reduce it down into a pure oil that we then can have lab tested. And, uh, it allows us to do proper, uh, dosing, uh, with, uh, the medicine. Cause like I said, we specialize in capsule formulations and you have to have, uh, quality oil to be able to, uh, compound off of.
Do you do that now in North Berwick?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
So this is not a learning process?
This is not a learning process, we have a full.
And is that like a lab environment?
Um, I mean, we're licensed, we have a licensed kitchen, um, for processing. So i- it's, it's not, it's not a, 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 you know, clean lab, uh, environment, but it's, it's a very clean kitchen, uh, environment.
Like a commercial kitchen operation.
Very clean.
Right.
Commercial kitchen, yeah.
Yeah, and I think what would happen, assuming that everything goes through, and then we add dispensary.
Correct.
Uh, to the land use.
Storefront, well, yeah.
And, uh, it means that they would still have to come in.
Yes.
For a condition, conditional use process. And things that you'd have to deal with, if, you know, what kinda chemicals you're using, for example, especially if you have people living in the building.
Our background is, you know, the wife is a, a doctor, and she worked in pharmaceutical industry for a long time. So we adopted some of those practices into what we do, which not many.
And that would be step two then.
How many square feet in total will you be leasing?
Uh, twenty-eight hundred square feet. And, um, let's see, six hundred and fifty square foot is the, um, the, the. Retail space, I, 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 I'm, yeah, where we see patients.
That includes the office?
So, no, so there's a waiting room, there would be a waiting room, uh, with a reception area with a division wall to the space where the medicine is actually, uh, dispensed.
And you'd be, this would be a mixed-use building with some residential still in the building?
There, there would be current, there would be one, uh, I'll let her speak on that one.
When you're ready, when you're done, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I'll let her answer that one, it's her building.
Yeah, it's, it's got, right, currently it's two residential units. Um, it's got ten units total to a residential. We don't really want to be residential landlords, um, so we wanted to stay on the commercial one. Uh, I already have been approached by somebody who wanted to, uh, see if they could have a recreational storefront, and the answer was no, um.
Is, is that the building that you came before us a couple of years ago on Portland Street?
No, we just purchased the property, my husband and I, on June twenty-sixth was our closing. Um, we don't want residential, I think the former person wanted residential.
They wanted seven residential units instead of the, they had some commercial in there. They wanted to make everything residential, and I think that's obvious.
We just wanted one residential for now, because, uh, honestly, it's, it's our daughter and our grandchildren that live there. So if he was doing anything dangerous, by the way, uh, that would be no. Um, and there is a gap between the residential and the side that he will be using. It's the gap, and we use it as like our service room, which we made because there was not one. It wasn't good for really what it was, uh, you know, we, we, we're just trying to make it safer there. So we've done a lot of improvements as far as that, but there's a gap between where they would be.
Mm-hmm. I mean, the, the goal, yeah, the goal that we've had in town is to make, uh, that Route four corridor as commercial as we can make it, because you've got railroad tracks and you've got Route four, it makes sense. And it's already, you know, ninety percent.
We also have the foundation that's next door that, uh, we wanna do, uh, more with as well down the road. Um, and make, we want it to be commercial as well. So as soon as, um, you know, the birds get their wings and fly better, um, then we'd like to do away with the other residential and.
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Well, you asked about the residential, so I'm just letting you know that our goal is to get rid of the residential as well. That's, that's my.
Make it all commercial.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our goal.
Lee, can you tell me, is, is what he described, would that be cultivation under our definition?
No.
Production facility.
Right, it would be production facility. Cultivation and production is really the whole grow aspect, um, where you have your, your mature plants, you have your new plants that you're trying to become mature plants, um, where you're actually picking bud, um, and that sort of thing. So this steps that they're talking about is, is actually the, um.
It's the post-processing.
Post-processing, yeah, thanks.
For us.
I'm just trying to think of wording that would fit into the, that they have in the ordinance now, but it's, it's post-cultivation. It's the actual processing to an edible or to a, um, smokable or, or whatever.
Capsule.
I think originally this.
Fifty percent limitation on if you're selling, you can't cultivate more than fifty percent?
That won't apply for him, yeah.
No.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Cause it's in a different location, yeah.
Um, from what we know with the state of formulating right now, um, they're still, they've gone from five types of marijuana-oriented businesses, that, you know, the cultivation, the lab processing, the selling, uh, the public usage, you know, that kinda stuff. Public usage, I think, is out from what I hear.
Yeah, there would be absolutely, we, we don't even, uh, some people try, um, but, uh, you know, we don't allow it on our property now. That's, that was, uh, part of the agreement with the town of North Berwick, and, and they understood that. And made that very clear that, you know, there is no use. Look, you don't go to a liquor store and crack open a six-pack of beer and start drinking.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not gonna, you know, uh, walk out or, or even sit in our place and, uh, roll up a joint and, and light it up.
That probably wouldn't mix well with the medical.
And to mention, just to, just to kinda reiterate, medicinal versus recreational has different people.
Yeah.
And what I mean by that is that they are, are using it for medicine. My husband and I have been doing this for a while, and we treat patients. We've actually had people, and we've asked people to leave and go to a different facility, because they are just, they got their medical license, but they're repusers.
Hmm.
And that's not me being a doctor and having my practices. We are truly about the uses of cannabis, and we are doing research. So part of our goal is to really see, because there are so many cannabinoids that are, that are unknown. There are so many diseases that are unknown, there are so many different types of cancers that some don't benefit. You know, for example, you can have a HER positive, uh, breast cancer patient, and you give them CBD. CBD, and you give them radiation, they're gonna die.
They're at risk.
They absorb the radiation more than CBD in them. So it's finding out these facts, knowing these things, it's a, it's a slow road to get to the truth and understanding. And that's where Trican and we are, and that was our goal from, from Aaron's grandmother having Alzheimer's to having cancer in our family. And, and me being a doctor, and I, and I'll be honest with you, when I had my practice, I prescribed, prescribed back in the day, cannabis to my MS patients that were not getting better. And there was nothing, no drug out there that was helping them, they couldn't go out, they were debilitating quickly. And I thought to myself, why don't you smoke some weed? And this was back in the early nineties, and I went out on the street in Spartanburg, South Carolina, with a pack of glasses on, and I went and got some weed, got him a bowl, and I said, just go home and smoke this.
And here we are today, in front of you guys.
You know, but it's really good you're explaining this, because it's, it's kinda difficult to separate the two uses.
Very difficult.
And, and it's good to have someone like you explain it. Cause it's, it's a fifty-fifty topic, you know, pretty much in the state right now, the way it's promoted.
And there aren't many people.
Yeah.
Operating the way we operate.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and we're.
So you're gonna be able to tell us more in a year, or two years, or three years, on how this whole thing is developing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we really want to, in having like a storefront, we really wanna show the true image of what medical is all about.
No neon lights.
No neon lights, no rastas. This is truly about when you're walking into a spa and you're hearing really soft music, and you're gonna get a massage, and you know it's gonna be a healing process. That's what we are. Our current facility, you're welcome to come down and check us out, but it, it literally, when you walk in, it looks like a doctor's office.
That's the one in, on Buffum Road?
Yes, on Buffum Road, we have a couch, we have pillows, we have chairs, we do consults there. Um, and each new patient is an hour minimum, that we really walk through where they're at, why they wanted to use cannabis, what they've tried in the past.
And, and the problem that we have at this location, and the reason why we wanna relocate, is because, again, we do have a lot of elderly people, uh, I have a, a couple people that come in in walkers, and we only see individuals privately. Uh, so we have a little small room that you have to wait in to buzz. And, you know, we have some old movie theater seats there that, that you got, you can sit at. But it's very tight, it's very tight. And if you have a couple people show up, it's very uncomfortable. Um, so we don't want, we're, we're looking for that more of that doctor office, uh, feel, uh, for the patients.
The, the name of your company is?
Trican Alternatives. We have a website, you can check it out. Might become a patient yourself.
Yeah, so these changes, um, in, in almost every year now, we've been making, tweaking, you know, as the state tells us more, and we're trying to figure out how this whole scene is, uh, we're making changes every year. So if we made the changes for the November, um, uh, vote, uh, your explanations will help people understand, you know, what it is we're dealing with. And then the second step for you would be just to get a conditional use permit, and I think if this gets voted in, then, you know, we.
And do you, do you understand what that last part means?
Yeah, it's gonna be a while.
Yeah. But, but we have to, we have time to make, looks like we have to add a little bit of the definitions and, and the table, but.
Five minutes of time.
It's, yeah, it's, it's minor.
Yeah.
But it, it does require a slight change to the changes we're proposing for November.
And, and, and I'm more than happy to, you know, throw in my two cents as far as verbiage goes and, and how to explain that. Because it is very difficult to understand how to word it so people really understand. We went through, we just recently went through it with North Berwick, because North Berwick, uh, just put a mor-, I don't know if the moratorium went through or not. We missed the, the, uh, but we went to the initial, uh, uh, public hearing on it. And they, uh, were, uh, gonna implement, uh, moratorium on it. But the, the complexity was how to word things and, and, and where to place places like this. And how are they gonna look? And how are they gonna operate? Um, I'm in belief, you, you know, we're very strict in how we operate. And I think it, it should stay that way, um, right across the board. And, and there, there are a lot of caregivers that, and as far as the safety goes, and those other caregivers that are opening up, uh, manufacturing, um, uh, and, uh, uh, extraction and retail, understanding, I'm for those guys, you know, even though, I guess, they're not really competition, but, uh, you know, the safety, the safety of having it all encompassed is a great, great model, to have it all in one building. Because, uh, you know, there's a se- a tighter security, uh, system that can be set forth, uh, in those buildings.
Do you deal with any other grow facility besides the one that you currently have?
Um, uh, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, there are a lot of other places growing, um, medical marijuana.
I mean, I know quite a few caregivers.
I think he's asking is, do you, do you make products with other people's materials?
Um.
Other than your own?
So, we do have, uh, one caregiver that, uh, we can get up to, what, thirty percent of their product from, but we don't even come close to that. So, the answer is yes.
And Lee J, that would have no bearing on what they're telling us right now, whether they import it into their processing and storefront.
Yeah, we're gonna be applying for a, a, we're applying for a extraction license, that whole other licensing, uh, tier that goes along with, with the things that we do, so that we, we can process for other caregivers. Because right now, there are a lot of processors out there that are using butane extraction, and they have to get these C one D one, uh, rated, uh, explosion-proof rooms. And, and a lot of medicinal patients don't want butane extracted.
Is that a, a state-defined process, the butane versus the alcohol?
There's two different licensing.
There's two classifications.
That's controlled by the state.
That's controlled by the state.
And butane, in my, um, knowledge, when you're dealing with medicinal patients, you should not be taking anything in.
Cancer patients is a big no-no.
They'll kill you a second.
So that, the butane itself is not evaporated out of the finished product?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's like saying this, you know, if you have a cup of, a shot glass of butane and a shot glass of grain alcohol, which one are you gonna drink? You know, i- i- it's an organic, it's an organic solvent.
It's the same way that you extract essential oils. So if you're familiar with essential oils, lavenders and carrot seed extracts that are beneficial for you, it is the same exact method of extracting the essential oil that is beneficial for the human.
I just have one thing, um, que- sort of question slash comment.
Sure.
Is there, is there still a daycare facility out that, in that area?
That's a great question, um, I.
There used to be one.
There's, the only daycare facility that I know, I hate using this as the example of where it is, is where that fatal crash was, up the road.
Yeah, that's one I know as well.
I believe we have.
A thousand feet, is it, or fifteen hundred?
That we have to, that are in the ordinances.
There are no daycares within a thousand feet of.
I think that's a daycare, I don't know if it's a daycare or if it's a daycare.
I just remember I, driving out that way.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I think, I think it's a red house.
Yeah, but that's.
The red house one, so that's way far.
Okay.
That's a mile and a half up the road.
Okay, so yeah, that was.
This is right next to Jitter Mugs.
You know what Jitter Mugs is?
Yep.
Yeah.
You're right, you're right across from Samah Falls Nursery, on that little street that goes in.
Right, and the, uh, and the sheet metal people.
Yeah, call them sheet metal, right.
Call them sheet metal.
Uh, but that, I'm sure the code enforcement, um, office would, would allow to measure it. I think it's fifteen hundred feet, if I'm not mistaken.
I can't remember, it's something like that.
I think it's fifteen hundred.
Yeah. I just, I wouldn't want you guys to get too far into this and all of a sudden that comes up.
Well, that's why we're here.
A thousand.
It is a thousand?
Yeah.
A thousand.
What is it?
A thousand feet.
It's a thousand and what, five hundred from any other cultivator? Or any other?
It's a thousand for both, yeah.
Okay.
We're not, we're not, we're not that close to daycare, are we?
You know, but you probably oughta go out and, I mean, it's a fifth of a mile, pretty much, a little less than that.
I also think you're a thousand feet away from four twenty-four on that street.
And then, in addition, uh, in addition to this, just it popping in my mind. Um, in, um, in that, uh, zone, what z- in North Berwick, has anything co- or, Berwick, I mean, has anything come up as far as hemp production, property that can be used, uh, for hemp? What, what zone is allocated for hemp production?
It's under ag, I would think at this point.
Is that outside agriculture or inside?
No, that's outside.
It's outside agriculture, it's like growing corn.
Yeah.
It's not cannabis.
Right.
So it would be.
An R three, I think, yeah.
It's a R three, yeah.
You'd really be up to the code enforcement officer to decide if it's closer to pot, to, to marijuana growing, or if it was agriculture, it'd be his call.
Well, how's that, because it's.
It, it'd be the state's call, I would think, at that point.
It's not, it's not marijuana at all.
Exactly, if you got the licensing to have the hemp, to produce hemp, I think you would be able to, as long as within an agriculture zone, you should be all set.
I think hemp has a lot of other uses.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, there's a lot of uses in hemp.
And I think that, that may be the difference.
Right. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Food. Henry Ford made a car out of it, yeah? Yeah? Body panels and fuel.
And it's outside growing, it's not inside.
It's outside growing, it's acreage, you're talking acreage, yeah. It all has to be inspected by the state.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but, so say someone wanna come in and grow hemp, right?
Which I do.
The, the code enforcement officers are gonna look at it, and hemp's not defined, so the code enforcement officer's gonna go, okay, is this agriculture or is this marijuana production?
Is, is it, is it, is it a cannabis plant, hemp?
No, 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 cannabis is not.
It's not a 100% approved product.
Well, then, no, then, then it's agriculture.
Yeah.
We define marijuana as having to be plant genus cannabis.
Yeah.
So if it isn't, it's not marijuana, it's agriculture.
Not at all.
So, problem solved.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first thing that should happen by the code officer would be, if they didn't feel comfortable with it, would be to call State Department of Agriculture Conservation and find out, you know, the difference from the state's perspective.
And just the reason. And just the reason I am asking is because we do have five acres on our land that we wanna, you know.
Have CBD, yeah.
CBD portion, absolutely.
Well, there's a lot of portions.
Are you, are you going to, you're gonna be living on Wentworth Road, you said?
Correct.
Uh, is that at the corner of Wentworth and Old Route Four?
Uh, Two Inn.
So, we're like two houses down and we own ten acres, uh, behind that, right, uh, but it up to the vice.
Yeah. Before you get to the Wentworth property.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So, you're, you're very close to where you're gonna be working then?
Yeah, and, and.
Brisk walk.
Part of the reasons why we bought the land, so we were transitioning from, I'm originally from Maine and, uh, we're in Massachusetts. And, um, Aaron decided to look for property up in Maine because ultimately we wanted to relocate. And that's when he found the North Berwick building or the facility, and then from there, we found the land.
You've been in North Berwick, you've got a, a track record up there, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Police know us, building inspector knows us, everybody knows us. We don't have odor issues, I can address that odor issue for you too.
Do you mind me asking what you're using for filtration of any type?
So, we're using carbon scrubbers with a negative draft, uh, setups.
Stays in the building.
So, it's sucking air in the building at all times and then blowing out clean air.
And not to mention that Aaron went, the whole extra stuff, uh, foam, insulation, the whole.
Oh, my god, I sprayed foam, that thing is tighter than a bull's.
It's seal tight.
Is that the building that's sort of down by the end of Buffham, near?
Train tracks.
By the tracks, okay.
Right behind the tracks.
Yeah.
You were probably the first one, I think, around here. Offerably, at least.
There was one other in there, Joey, uh, Joey's actually, I think, looking at doing some stuff here in town too. But, he's there as well.
So, just, just to real quick reiterate what we were discussing before, I know that the storefront is going to be, you know, we'll have to get a conditional use permit, that's not gonna be till November. But, if I, if I accurate in, in thinking that if we did relocate our kitchen in the bottom of, um.
And extraction lab.
And extraction lab, we would be okay?
No. Well, right now, you can't do anything that qualifies as a dispensary in the RCI.
Now, it wouldn't be technically a dispensary, 'cause caregivers can process their own as long as they have their patients. So, they're limited to who they can, they can sell to, but they can still legally sell who, it's just.
We would not sell out of that facility, we would still be selling out of our original facility.
Yeah.
We would just, until this time and frame had come where we could possibly do the storefront. So, leave that space vacant right now, but utilize and build out the bottom so we can move our commercial kitchen, which is small, and we wanna open it up and expand it, um, and also move our current extraction lab that we have over into the basement of that building. No, no dispensing of medicine would occur at that location until, uh, the.
These changes.
Until the changes have been made.
Can, can you, I, I'm still confused about a storefront.
It's, it's.
Is it a production, what, what is it?
It, it's an extraction, it's production, the way I see it.
It is, but the, the, the issue being is if you're licensed as a caregiver, you have certain abilities to do stuff. So, you have your flower product and then, if you have your restaurant licensing, then you can make edibles and you can make tinctures and you can make CBD oil pills. That all, in, as long as they have their allotted patients, they can still sell to them, whether they go to them or they come to them, it's still, that's still, from what I understand, it should be alright. It's just a matter of telling the state where they reside and where they, they, their facility is.
When does it convert to a storefront?
The dispensary is different licensing, so, that's state-wise, and that allows.
The function that's different, it sounds like they're still selling to the same patients.
They are, but it's just capping the amount of patients that they can have.
We're, we're capped right now, but, but come.
So, by calling it a dispensary, the cap is removed?
It's, it's, yes.
That may be the difference.
That is the difference.
So, once, and you're saying that you wouldn't have appointments anymore, like now, I think you schedule appointments with people, but with the storefront, more people and less restrictions on hours and that type of thing.
Right. Well, we, we, no, we still operate, I mean, I don't know how other people are gonna operate, we're gonna operate by appointment. You never know, you don't just walk into, well, there are walk-in clinics. Well, I was gonna say, you just don't walk into your doctor.
But, we're all learning from this, so, right?
I mean, the, the, the ability is there to have more than five patients at one ti-. Right now, we're limited to have, to being allowed to have only five patients.
Six plants per.
At one time, right?
Yeah.
Come October ninth, that's gonna open up to allow unlimited number of patients to be in our waiting room. And then, we would still be seeing those one at a time.
But, the issue, just, just so you get a.
Doesn't mean there's gonna be a hundred people there.
Where we are at, and the reasons that, eh, appointments are extremely important for us is 'cause, as I mentioned, when we see any patients, we spend an hour with that patient.
We can't be held up.
I don't want someone sitting there and going, waiting, 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 and then, right now, they can hear because of the room, even though they're behind a closed door, they can hear, not that we have HIPAA regulations, however, some patients' information is very personal because they're talking about very, very personal health-related issues. And they want their privacy. And so, I, I don't want somebody sitting there, just walking in currently right now and being able to hear this and just squirting their stomach, oh, I just need, I just need to get like, I just need to come in and get like, why don't they stop walking? And that's what I tell patients, especially some, to just walk in and don't make an appointment. I go, oh, you were on my schedule today. And they're like, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and I go, I was just waiting, I don't want you to have to wait.
So, when the storefront, when you're actually operating as a storefront, how does that scene change?
So, it will, again, it'll be by appointment only still because we're gonna, but, we'll be able to bring more people into a waiting room at tight, tighter, tighter increments, um, for the patients so that they can.
A more comfortable waiting room.
Yeah. It's a much larger waiting room. It's literally a closet versus a quarter of this room.
So, they go back, go back to the original point about, uh, moving the kitchen, it'd be a, it'd be a production facility.
Which is allowed under dispensary. So, they can do that.
In RCI.
Yeah, currently, currently. So, what's the step, though, for them to do that currently?
Fill out a conditional use application.
So, still, we have to, but we can.
Yeah, still have to fill out the conditional.
Yeah, we can apply, so we can come down tomorrow and build in.
You could actually get the conditional use.
So, I mean, just to move it along, I understand, you know, how the, the educational process here, um, which will certainly happen again when they come before you for the conditional use. But, to move it along, what we would need to do, um, if you, after the public hearing, if you want us to change that, would just be to add at the definition of medical marijuana dispensary slash storefront and then take and put, um, dispensary storefronts, um, as a conditional use in the RCI zone, which they currently are not. That would address their issues.
So, you're adding a line to the table?
Nope, it's all, medical marijuana dispensaries is already a line in your table.
Oh, okay.
We would just add retail sales.
But, you would, we would need to change the table to allow this in the RCI.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
But, we don't need to add a line, I mean.
No, no, just change the X to a C.
Can somebody come up with a better term than storefront?
Yeah.
It, it just does not seem to accurately describe.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna go home and sleep on that, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, don't, you, you won't wanna sleep now because we need to decide right now.
I think for the, for our purposes, we're adding that slash storefront, dispensary is just as confusing.
But, it all comes under medical, so, it's not like we're suggesting it's a need.
But, dispensary sounds to me better than a storefront, a storefront gives you an impression.
Right.
So, so, the other way to do it would be, within the definition of medical marijuana dispensary, would to say that it includes the retail sales as a storefront. For medical marijuana, not recreation.
May, maybe, maybe adding for medical, that tends to clear up that mental image you get.
It would be under the medical marijuana dispensary definition that you have now.
Yeah.
So, which is different than the recreational.
What does the state exactly determine it as? What, what is their definition? It's, I thought the state defined it as a, uh, medical marijuana retail storefront.
They do.
That's their definition, but we, but we wanna eliminate the word retail.
Well, they wanna eliminate the word retail. They're concerned about the confusion with recreational use.
And I agree with you because I think that oftentimes, individuals associate retail with recreational, they do.
All right, then, for, say, medical marijuana storefront, yeah? Period, yeah.
Yeah, qualify it right up front.
Qualify medical marijuana storefront.
Well, and that's what I propose here for you, is it says medical marijuana dispensary slash storefront. Doesn't say retail sales, just says storefront. That will take care of the issue, and then it becomes a conditional use in the RCI zone.
And then, as far as their conditional use process, to have the extraction facility, for example, I think we can deal with that before November, uh, separately. You know, as far as, you know, the building size and the.
As Mike said, it could be a production facility until the, the retail sale changes.
Yes, right. Production facility is already allowed as a conditional use in the RCI.
So, they could, they could apply right now.
Correct, correct.
With a converted condition.
Get our, get our kitchen inspections and.
That's correct.
And, you know, the things that may come up there is the division between residential, but, from what I hear, it's, it's all the same families that are involved here, but, um, I don't know if there would be any issue, issue with the planning board, but conditional use, we have residential in the same building as medical marijuana.
That would really become a code issue, relevant to building code, and how the building code sees medical marijuana production, you know, is it, is it a, you know, some sort of a high-hazard use versus a non-hazard use, but that's a building code issue.
For example, if it was butane being used in the extraction.
Yeah, you need to have, you need to have a certified blast room, you need to have ventilation, you need to have proper.
Yeah, let's not get ahead of ourselves.
That may be a fire marshal's office at Augusta.
Yeah, you also have to get a certification from a state engineer for those, so, it's a long process on getting those.
But, if it's an alcohol extraction, you don't?
I, I think we are, I, I think.
Cause alcohol, that's flammable.
This is an easy fix.
Oh, yeah, but, um, it's ethanol, ethanol is classified different than butane and propane.
It's not explosive.
Right, it's, right, it's flammable, it's not, yeah.
Right.
All right, we're still pub, we're still doing a public hearing, it's a long one.
You are, you are, you have been.
But, it's educational, I think, for everybody to, to try to sift out the differences and how, where this is all going. So, are we clear on what we have to do?
Well.
And then, what they have to do.
Let's recap real quick.
You've got, you've got other issues to deal with in the public hearing, and then, you've got the way they work, the way the agenda is set up. You'll have, under old business land use amendments, and that's where you'll discuss whether you want us to make those changes.
After we close the public hearing, we can discuss the technicalities and the wording.
You got it.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Done with me, right?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
You have a letter from somebody in the, in the audience, uh, regarding chickens.
Oh, I'll get to that issue.
That's not part of the public hearing, well, I guess it is because it is a change.
Yes, you could read it into the record.
Yeah.
Lee, do you have any suggestions for how we deal with that issue, the chicken issue?
I, I mean, I think it's still gonna come under the whole agricultural farm animal issue that you have here. It's not clear, as clear as Bud. Um, even with that, because you're gonna get into other animal farm, farms that require lot size shall be determined by the municipal officers charged with enforcement. I mean, chickens have become an issue, I think, across the state. Um, it's not just here in Berwick. Everybody's buying chickens and letting them roam and, you know, doing whatever they want, egg-wise, I mean, it's, I don't know how you deal with that.
Well, as far, so, we have a letter from somewhere in town that lives in R one, that has an issue with her neighbor, uh, that has chickens. We also have an amendment, amendment four, that is trying to, to deal with farm animals, uh, and the amount of land you need to have those.
And that would come back to the code officer at that point to deal with.
It would, but, uh, we're not dealing with chickens in the amendment.
Correct, because, not specifically, because it, well.
It says other animal farms.
Other animals that are, yes, that's.
So, that shall be determined by the municipal officer charged with the enforcement and shall conform to the lot size for similar-sized animal, I'm not sure what that means.
Well, what that means is that if you're dealing with smaller animals like that, that the code officer's probably gonna come out, look at the property and say, well, you can only have two, three, five, whatever the number.
But, it doesn't say a rooster versus chicken, which is a heck of a difference.
Correct.
Rooster is a chicken.
Um, you also, I don't know, I don't know enough about them, but, you know, are there odor issues that may come with that as well?
What about, our performance standard seven point six on noise?
Um, I don't.
I mean, it sounded like the letter noise was a fairly large issue here.
Yeah, um, part of that problem is that, um, I, again, I, I need to look at your noise ordinance, but a lot of them talk about intermittent noise being acceptable. Um, so, you know, if you've got a, a loud, um, piece of machinery that's constantly running, that's different than, um, a rooster, you know.
That crows once in a while.
That crows once in a while or wakes up at five o'clock and, you know. Right? Yeah, I mean, so, and, and I'm dealing with a whole noise issue in another community with, with those folks. And, um, it's a very, it's a tough issue, even with, um, having noise standards and having noise meters and, and, um, how do you do that? But, some, some of the ordinances talk about intermittent sound versus, you know, continuous sound, so.
As, as far as this person here, that I, what I've seen here is that, you know, she's pretty serious about this.
The other problem you're gonna have, the other problem you're gonna.
Exactly me.
That's you.
But, I don't wanna go over there and talk, it'll be a little.
All right, well, please step up to the.
I really don't want to.
You don't want to.
I'm just like exhausted with this, honestly.
Yeah, let, do you mind if I read your letter?
No, not at all.
All right, uh, so, this.
I'm gonna lose my mind.
All right, um, this. So, let it be said that this person that wrote this letter is in the audience. And it says, hello, board members, I'm writing to you with an issue that I've been dealing with and hope that it's something that can be addressed because there is no ordinance in place to help with, with me. This has been going off for several months, my backyard neighbor has chickens, roosters and a goose. The crowing begins at daylight and then continues throughout the day off and on. I can no longer enjoy my windows open, I can no longer enjoy my, sitting in my yard. While I understand that Maine is a farming state, I respect that, I continue to feel these homes are too close together for this noise level. If it was a dog barking all day, I could call the police and complain of the noise, but because it's foul birds, I have no rights. I've already spoken to a town manager, he was very kind, understanding, but with no ordinance in place, his hands are tied. I spoke to the code enforcement office, information I was given was the houses needed to be a hundred feet apart, sadly, they are. I also spoke to the police with the same results, everyone has been kind and understanding, but cannot do anything without something in place. It's not that I have anything against chickens, but I do have something, something against being woken up at daybreak when I do not need to be up. They get going back and forth throughout the day until I feel I'm going out of my mind, so, I leave my beautiful home and go sit in a parking lot for some peace and quiet, it's not right. Those homeowners should realize how unfair they are being. Uh, I also wrote to two of the selectmen, listed on our town website, looking for suggestions of what my next step would be. I never heard back from either of them. Then I saw a meeting coming up to add amendments, I saw number four was about farm animals and I had my hopes up. I really don't want this to become a court issue or about a civil matter, but I'm not giving up. So, and, and the, um, amendment four that this, um, citizen is, uh, talking about is, I think it's the other farm animals, there's three paragraphs in the amendment where it says the required lot size shall be determined by municipal officer charged with enforcement, that's our code enforcement guy, and shall conform to the lot size for similar-sized animal. And there are, I don't think any performance standards for similar size.
That would be the call of the code officer, but here's, here's where it gets a little more complicated.
So, if the code enfor- officer would go out there and he would have to gauge on, I don't know what he's gonna use for standards.
If he's gonna look and see twenty.
How many chickens are we talking about?
I honestly don't know, it starts at daybreak, the rooster, and then it's like all day with them like cackling back and forth.
It's a rooster issue.
You know, and then they have the goose that will all get out of each other.
And it's one rooster, so, I'm not sure that lot size is gonna matter at all.
Right.
It's a horrible.
I mean, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't think lot size is the answer.
No. No.
It is sound and smell again.
It's sound, but our noise ordinance says.
The intermittent sound is.
There are decibel limits, but you can go over them fifteen minutes a day now.
Yeah, I'd venture to guess even a rooster.
I don't know how long the rooster's going, but I'm going to guess it's not more than fifteen minutes at a time. It may be several times a day, but not more than fifteen minutes at one time, correct. Yes.
I just wanted to say, moving from Massachusetts and actually us having chickens, um, in a very non-rural area, as the ordinances that were allowed over there, which may work in your favor regarding her, is that roosters actually are the problem. And it's not the chickens, it's the rooster. So there was ordinances that if you had, if you had so many acres of land and you were away from your neighbor and you had your rooster confined to a certain portion or area of your land, then you were allowed to have the rooster. But you had to have so many acres not to disturb the, because roosters are very, very loud. And when they are mating, they will go around to every single chicken and, and, and it's very loud. And I don't have a, a rooster and we never did, we had chickens. It was quiet. And, and, and they're peaceful, they lay their eggs, they pick, they eat all the ticks, which is great, great tick control, particularly in the state of Maine, with everything going on, never had to put frontline on my animals ever. Um, but a rooster is the main issue.
I'm not asking these people to get rid of them, but the rooster is just driving me because they'll get going during the day. It's just all, you know, I don't, I don't know what to do anymore, you know?
Do we know if the CEO has gone out to talk to the neighbors?
Um, he did, um, it's the one that's covering right now.
Joe.
Right. And no change, nothing?
Well, only because it's more than a hundred feet, but basically, um, I gave you a picture from my backyard to this. My backyard is probably to that door, you know, and it's just, I don't, I don't know what to do anymore, you know? And my neighbor, we only, there's like the three of us, he gets home like almost two o'clock in the morning from work and then I'm just waking him up, you know? But they, they're quiet, I'm pretty quiet, you know, but I don't know. The air against my husband's will will say that, you know?
The, the, the problem that we would have is even if we put this in place, that rooster is already there and so.
It'd be grandfathered.
You, you can't enforce it, it's like grandfathered and if you go out and.
I assume roosters, like all of beings on the planet, don't live forever.
True.
Yeah, but you may be grandfathered for having a rooster.
Well, it depends on if they have it.
But I don't think that the, the rooster's grandfather is the, I mean, this rooster isn't going to live forever.
No.
So at some point, if we put something in place, I don't know what the average life expectancy for a rooster is, but it can be seventy-five years.
It could be a few years.
Yeah.
Or it could be two months. It all depends on if they're gonna eat them earlier.
Or how hungry people get or whatever.
So, I mean, what we can do, um, to amend that wording would just put a statement in that indicates that, um, roosters are not allowed in town.
In R one zones, yeah.
Yeah, one, in the R one zone.
We could try that. Yeah, I'm wondering how many roosters there are in R one. I know there's a lot of chickens. And R one, there's a lot of people with very large lots.
Yeah, yeah. Is there a, is there a number that the state has? I mean, I know we have a number here for cattle, horses, sheep, swine, you know, number of animals per lot size. Is there, does the, I know these came from the state, correct? Do they have anything on number of chickens per lot?
I haven't seen anything I can check.
You can have a lot of chickens on an acre.
And a lot of people keep chickens in a twenty by twenty or ten by twenty fenced area, otherwise they get eaten by.
But you can also restrict roosters.
Right, roosters shall not be allowed in the R one zone.
In R one zones, right.
I, I would try that.
Add that to your wording, we'll discuss that after the public hearing, but yes.
But because they've already had it, then nothing can be done. So I'm just gonna have to leave, I can't, I can't, I'm going crazy living there.
It, it says in your letter that it's a civil matter and it, it really, at this point, it seems to be a civil matter.
Have you talked with your neighbors about the rooster?
Do we, do we know if Joe asked the neighbors, explained the neighbors what the problem is and, and what could they do about it? Do we know if, if Joe tried the good neighbor approach, meaning your neighbor's having a problem, what can you do about this?
I don't know, I'll, I'll talk with Joe and I can send him a letter too, I can send him a letter and.
You know, I mean, this may be one before we have mandatory intervention.
Right.
We just ask people to be good neighbors.
We have to know whether we're going to put roost, no roosters in R one.
I would suggest that anyway.
We don't want to do that anyway, but it's not going to solve the problem for some time.
No, 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 no.
Right.
It's correct.
But, you know.
I mean, we've got two issues going on, one is the immediate one and how does the code enforcement officer deal with it? The other is let's add this to the wording so that in the future it can.
What, what amazes me is I have like young children, like teaching the children that this is okay with, you know, to live and disturb other people, it's just weird to me.
It teaches a lot of responsibility.
Just, just on the emotional aspect of that, I understand where you're coming from, but when you live next to a train and it goes by, you don't hear the train anymore. So it's kind of like being like ear blind or auditory blind. They probably are so used to and accustomed to it that they don't recognize it, like a, and I mean saying that to the reality of the situation.
Well, and, and I'm pretty sure kids have been raised on farms for a good long time.
Yeah, so for them, it's.
It's not like the rooster was an invention yesterday.
We're not talking, you know, they're, we're pretty close, you know? Like if the windows are open, we can hear each other talking, you know? I mean, it's not like we're, we're apart. And when we first built our house, we were told we had to have matching sheds, no, um, clotheslines and no chickens, honest to God. I have it like in my deed or like the original papers, but they're the second owners of this house, I guess it just went away, you know, but I don't know.
If it's in the deed, it runs with the property.
Right, yeah.
So if that, if their deed specifically says that, then.
Mine does, but I don't know, um, it was all part of that penny pawn program, like, um.
I don't know.
They're, they're off of Old Pine Hill and you're off of Sullivan though, right? So that could be difference of the roadage though, cause since they're on Old Pine Hill, they might not have that in their deeds.
We have other issues there too, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Lot of animal problems on Old Pine Hill Road, aren't there?
It sounds like.
I know, and they're right next to each other, I mean, it's, it's not that far away. Well, the pigs will eat the chickens, so.
What we'll do after this public hearing, I think you're the last person that we're going to talk to. We will put a no rooster in R one change in here and see if that goes. But again, it's not going to fix the current rooster.
The best recommendation is just talk with your neighbor and see.
Well, I have no, no interest in talking to them.
Thank you very much.
So we've covered marijuana and chickens. There's no one else here to speak about the, uh, public hearing, about the changes that we're going to be voting on in November. So with that, we will close the public hearing, it was a long one, it's quarter of eight.
I, I've got a sort of technical stylistic political question. We generally do all of these as one big warrant and ask everybody to vote on everything.
Yes.
Maybe we should break them down?
Yes.
And have each one.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the rooster people may be incensed and want to vote against this, but they're fine with everything else.
Right.
I might, maybe, maybe just split off marijuana, split off farm animals, but then everything else, just.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we, we only have three topics, right? We've got.
Now, there's five.
Order control.
Yeah, there's six, six amendments.
But three topics.
Right, right.
Yes.
So let's keep the three topics together.
Okay.
One typically is going to be the, the prime tanning parcel, the four to one ratio between residential and, and, uh, commercial.
So amendment one would be one warrant, amendments.
Then anything related to marijuana would be the second one.
I guess we want.
Well, two and six.
And then the manufacturing home would go with. I, I would do five.
Yeah. Just to individualize them.
Recommend that at least to the select board, that's what they do.
We want the, uh, the rooster to be a part of four, do we want to make it a separate thing?
No, no, leave that as part of farm animals.
Yes.
That's gonna get a little picky there.
Not worried that the rooster people will sign on.
Yeah, but I have a feeling, I mean, with the, with the pigs that we, pig issue that we've been hearing about, it may be good to leave it all together because they're really the same issue.
Yep.
Sean's got a solution, a, a barbecue of ribs and wings to solve this all. I think that may be the answer on, on Old Pine Hill Road.
Well, you know, for piggies, October is usually a pretty good time for pigs, yeah.
Problem solved.
Yeah, we were thinking maybe the pig issue would, would go away before winter.
Yeah.
Uh, so let's leave that, uh, as six different things to vote on for the land use. And I think that's, that's very good because my guess is if somebody has one little thing out of six they don't like, they'll fail.
Right, and they're gonna shut it down, right.
And these, the nature of these topics.
And, and, and the big one really is the four to one ratio in the prime area is important. We've, you know, that's something we've been working on for four years, so that should be a standalone thing. Marijuana is developing as we go along and we're learning. And that should be a standalone as well, for sure.
Yep.
Uh, the manufacturing homes, yeah, that's not much.
So, so on the, that dispensary issue, we're going to add the word storefront somewhere in there?
Yep.
And then on the table, we're going to change from an X to a C asterisk.
Under RCI.
RCI.
Correct.
And, and the storefront will be qualified with the word medical.
Yes, it would, it's, it'll follow medical marijuana dispensary slash storefront.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Yep.
What else do we have on the land use? So the, the public hearing has been closed and now we're discussing, you know, finalizing. And I think it's, it's, I'm glad that we dealt with this because I think splitting that up into six individual things to vote on, um, is important.
So do, do we need to vote on what we just said or we?
I would suggest that what you do, um, for the purposes, for your purposes would be, you could make a recommendation to us that with the proposed changes discussed tonight, that those changes be made and that this package be passed on to the selectmen.
Passed on to the board of selectmen.
Yep.
So we would need a motion that would say, uh, the big thing is we would like to have all the six amendments broken up as individual amendments for voting and the two changes, the one for the, um, for the, for the farm animals, no roosters in R one.
Correct.
Be changed and the other change is defining the medical storefront issue.
Correct.
And the table, and the change on the table.
And the change on the table in, in RCI.
What, what he said.
I'll second.
I didn't make the motion though.
No, he just.
My motion is what he said, my motion is what he said.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to, and also to pass that on to the board of selectmen.
He wants to.
The, so the ballot, I think, needs to be finalized on the twenty first.
We're finalizing it right now.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like Patty in the selectman finalized the ballot, it might be too late to split the questions, is what I'm saying. I, I will have to check with Patty and I'll check with Patty Monday.
Why would it be too late to do that?
Cause the way that, the way that the ballot's constructed and I think it, I think what would be, what we would be putting on, on Patty is, might be a, might be a, might be a burden, I'll have to check with her Monday.
I would assume.
It's hitting the return space six times, how much of a burden is that?
Well, they may change all the numbering.
I'll volunteer to come down and hit the return bar six times myself if it's that big of a burden.
I think it's important that we do make them individual items.
I think there's a selectman meeting Tuesday.
Yeah.
And she probably has some of the materials already printed out, because they have packets and stuff that they get and things, things like that. So things that might already be, I'll check Monday, I'll let you guys know.
So, so let it be said that having a public hearing, you know, we postponed this for two weeks, you know, that's the kind of pickle you can get into then.
Well, it's, for one, so we ran into this last year and this is a whole, whole nother topic to bring up when it comes to, cause you guys don't meet on that first week of July and it throw, it really makes things difficult where you have to schedule the public hearing and get the ordinances and stuff in place, because we've been working on land use ordinance amendments before the last vote. Still run up against the crunch time.
Well, we have a motion and we have a second and we're discussing and I think we should stay with the motion and, yeah, I think so.
I think it's more important to have them individualized.
I would say we, we recommend six, if it can't be done, it can't be done, right? Our recommendation is.
The board of selectmen, we're, we're also recommending to the board of selectmen that this is the way we'd like to do it.
Okay.
So all those in favor of moving our changes, changes to the six land use items as being individual and the two changes to the tables, all those in favor of that? That's four in the affirmatives, so that's going to get moved on to the board of selectmen as we discussed.
Design guidelines?
Design guidelines.
Design guidelines, and I think we have an old document.
I'll just be really quick because we've talked about it before, but you have the document in front of you. James did an excellent job covering for me. Yeah, I mean, cleaning up photos and, and just doing some other things that I didn't have the ability to do. I think it's a really good document, um, it provides, it's, it's not an ordinance, but it provides folks with some ideas and thoughts about what you're trying to accomplish in town. And I, you know, I would hope that, um, you adopt it and, um, as a document for use by all developers and move it forward for that purpose.
So, uh, to summarize for everyone, these design guidelines only apply to the prime tanning parcel, as we call it, number one. And they are used as a reference by developers and they're pretty much conform to our form base code that we added to our ordinance.
Correct.
Although they are guidelines.
Correct, they're not required.
They're, they're not actually embedded down in the land use ordinance itself.
Correct.
Uh, they've been proofread.
They're referred to in the land use ordinance, but they're not a part of the land.
That's, that is correct, and they're referred to as design guidelines.
Although when you read these, a look at them, they sure bring back memories of some of the renditions that we've seen, both by Mike Lassol and Form Base Code and all that stuff, so they, they're very consistent with our comprehensive plan. So, do we adopt these? Do we make a motion and a second to adopt these as a reference manual to our Form Base Code?
Yes.
Would that be the proper way to do it?
That would be perfect wording for you to use.
Then if I said that, I'll make that a motion then, that we adopt.
I would like to add a little something to your motion, which is that if these are adopted, then they'd be posted on the website and an opportunity for comments be given to the public and to developers in particular, to hear what they have to say.
Sure, absolutely.
Just.
A copy was given to Les.
All right, and, and he had no negative comment or, or hasn't responded yet?
Probably hasn't looked at it, he's.
All right, but, but he's not the only developer in town.
Yeah, he's not here.
He's not here.
Well, and he's not the only developer and, and the public should have a chance to.
But, but again, I mean, while, while you made.
The nature of these, if, if comments come in that we think we can change it anytime we want to.
That, that's right.
Or even favorite pictures that people have of their favorite major or favorite whatever.
Well, and again, they're really meant for the prime area unless you choose to decide to start to, you know, expand power where they're used, so. And that would be your choice.
And people may want to comment on that as well.
Yep. Yep.
Good. So I would second it with that understanding.
And, and so we have a motion and a second then, and, and it's important to note that this is a reference document, that they're guidelines and we can change them, um, after we adopt them anytime we want, I think.
Yes.
As long as they're consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Correct.
Correct.
So with that in mind, we have a motion and a second to adopt these design guidelines. All those in favor? So we are adopting these design guidelines for the prime parcel and we're going to post that so that it's viewable by everybody in town, they can look at the pictures, they're nice pictures. All right.
I took one myself.
Really? So you, you were able to help Lee J along on this then?
Yeah.
Did you give yourself a photo credit in there?
You did a fine job with it, a fine job.
That's him right there in the middle. All right.
One, one more item of business before we go on? There had been some talk about this. There had been some talk about the selectmen changing their meeting date to take over our meeting date?
Yeah, they're trying to figure out something because Ed wants to attend another, another meetings that are on a Tuesday, so. I mean, whatever works for you guys, but that's, I haven't heard anything else on that, on any progress on it.
So are we still good on first and third Thursdays for now?
For the, for the time being, and I'll let you know as soon as I hear anything progressing.
This would be ongoing?
Yes, it'd be.
So we would meet Tuesdays instead of what we're seeing here?
If they take over first and third Thursday, then we'll have to figure out a new day.
Yeah, you could do second and fourth Thursday, you could do whatever you want.
We could either.
Which reminds me, real quick, so you know, I have, I am going to college in the fall. I won't be here for the semester. I got class on Tuesday and Thursday.
Who's your replacement?
Well, I'll be here, but I'm going to have to make sure anything that he helps me with or does is going to be.
He won't be working at all, he won't be coming to our meetings.
Won't be coming to the meetings for the semester.
Where are you going?
USM.
But he'll be better when he gets back.
So if we moved it to Wednesdays, then you might have a chance. Minus the inversion Berwick possible Wednesdays.
Right, Wednesday, we can move to Wednesday.
Then man needs a chance to do his homework.
So it's the second and fourth Wednesdays because I have another commitment on the first and third Wednesdays.
So I mean.
Let's wait and see what they do before we ask.
One thing at a time.
Yeah, let them. It's that big can of worms right there, changing time.
Oh, yes.
And that's first, any other informational items?
Nope.
No public comments? And the next item is an adjournment, we want to go home.
I move to adjourn the Thursday, August 16th, planning board meeting. I second.
All those in favor of adjourning?